It's 2 o'clock. I'm Mayor Protam Chris Cookneal sitting in for Marlin due to conflict of interest. So there'll just be the six of us here. Can we have roll call, please?
Mayor Kirkendall, absent excused. Mayor Protam Cookneal.
Here.
Councilman Arnold.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilman Lozelle.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay. City manager, do you want to launch us in?
Let that be the city attorney.
Okay.
Do you need to read that title?
Go ahead.
Item 1A, Discussion Possible Action Regarding Authorization to Appeal the City of Prescott Public Safety Personnel Retirement System (PSPRS) Local Board Eligibility Decisions on Claims Brought by Amanda Meisner and Roxanne Warnicki to the Yavapai County Superior Court and Regarding Authorization to Appeal the Yavapai County Superior Court Decision Regarding Julian Ashcraft's Claim for PSPRS Eligibility. Case number P-1300-CV201400726 to the Arizona Court of Appeals.
City Attorney.
Well, this is your opportunity to make a decision about whether or not to appeal one or more of the cases listed in the agenda.
Okay, Councilman Arnold, your lights lit up.
Mayor Protam, thank you. I would like to make a motion and request the support of my fellow council members to enter into executive session for the purposes of legal advice. There's some information that I think should be disseminated to the balance of our group before we make a determination.
Okay, motion on the floor to recess in the executive session. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, let's vote. All in favor?
Passes 5 to 2. Councilman Blair and Councilman Lamerson dissenting.
Okay.
Four to two, I'm sorry.
Okay, we are recessing in the executive session. We'll call everyone back when... Yeah, we can go in. You guys can stay there. Great. And I understand that there's members of the public that would like to speak. I'd like to welcome you to do that now. Please keep it to around three minutes. I won't cut anybody off if you're a little over, but please try and keep it down there. You betcha.
Good afternoon. Hi, John. I'm probably the last person that you want to hear from, but I did want to make a few remarks. My name is Pat McGroder and I represented the Meisner Warnicki and Ashcraft widows. I came here before after the Ashcraft case when I urged you not to appeal to the Superior Court. And I think Ms. Wilcox had a very good point. She indicated that she wanted to review the record and have judicial review, and I think, Mayor Protam, you mentioned that as well. Well, we played by the rules. We sent it to Judge Mackey. Judge Mackey read all the briefs. Not only did he read all the briefs, but he read the whole transcript. We had oral argument, and Judge Mackey ruled. I don't know what else you can consider in terms of taking to the Court of Appeals. The Court of Appeals will look at the same record that you all have looked at, that Judge Mackey has looked at. They're not going to reinvent the wheel. And as you saw, Ms. Wilcox, in that hearing, and as any of you have looked at the transcripts of the Meisner Warnicki hearing, the issues of hazardous duty and all the other issues were virtually factually uncontested. The Court of Appeals is not going to retry this case. They're going to look at the record, and the record is replete in both those cases with the notion that the facts substantiate the statutory requirements. We met them. And in Meisner and Warnicki, the vote was 5-0, including your mayor. So I came here the last time, prefatory to which I sent a letter of compromise to discuss settlement of the case. Didn't get anything back except the courteous response from John. My clients, my widows, and the six kids want finality. They want resolution. They followed all the rules. The hearing board that they came before was of your making, at least two or three of the members. They heard all the evidence. They heard all the facts. Judge Mackey has now heard the facts, and I've looked at the potential notices of appeal. It's the same issues, the same things, and litigated twice now, and in front of Judge Mackey. Same thing. So the problem we're having is that what if any health insurance these widows have and these kids have runs out in June? When the Hundred Club starts not funding the health insurance that these widows and six children have. To the extent that you feel that you need to appeal, I would ask you to take a second look at that, for all the right reasons. Not the least of which is that, as all of you know so painfully well, these three gentlemen burned alive in service of the City of Prescott. The idea that they were not regularly assigned to hazardous duty is a misnomer. It's an illusion. The statute, statutory definition is set forth. It's a factual determination to be made by the very board that was constituted by this council, further supported by Judge Mackey's decision. We would again extend the olive of compromise if the council is so willing. We're more than happy to discuss an amicable resolution of this case. But the impression somehow, some way, not by you, that these surviving family members are feeding on nothing but greed and are vilified by pernicious comments in the newspaper and around this town, those people didn't sit through the hearing that I sat through and that John sat through. And the idea somehow, some way, that these victims, by pursuing the very rights that all of you would pursue if in fact you had a loved one in similar circumstances, is not only unfair to these widows and these children, but really a slap in the face in terms of the City of Prescott Fire Department, the Wildland Division, and what these men died for. So to the extent that you are considering an appeal and have made up your mind to that extent, I would ask you to take a second look at that first impression. And look and think about the record and the enormity of the due process that's been gone on already and decisions made. We will, of course, abide by any decision you make, but to the extent that I thought I heard that you wanted an independent judicial review of the Ashcraft case, and that's why some of you voted to appeal, you got that. Judge Mackey is as talented a judge as we have up here in Superior Court. He looked at everything, heard arguments of John, read everything that John presented, and we as well, and ruled definitively. That's the record that the Court of Appeals will have, and I believe that's the record that you wanted, and you got it. So I would ask you, please, give at least the Ashcraft family and the Meisner Warnicki family an opportunity to have peace and rest, knowing that their loved ones are resting peacefully in heaven. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's not often anybody gets to talk to this city council.
Just please start off with your name.
My name is Major A.J. Velardo, United States Army retired. I live in the City of Prescott. I have some knowledge of the government, and I have some knowledge of equality. Six hot-shot firefighters get full benefits. Thirteen do not. There's no fairness there. I would like to know, and I'd address this to John, are you going to take away the benefits from the six because they were budgeted positions, which has proved to have been not part of the law? Either they were firemen or they weren't. Either they died or they didn't. Nineteen young men who were put on this, in this job by this city, the only city in America that had wildland firefighters. Now the city doesn't want to take responsibility for them. Six get benefits. Thirteen don't. There's a... We're all Americans. At least I am. Born and raised. Served my country for 28 years under the umbrella of fairness. Two people do something, they should get the same benefits. Nineteen do something and die, they should get the same benefits. It's a matter of common sense and what's right and what's wrong. You want to appeal this, you can appeal to the cows come home. The answer's going to be, it's going to cost the city a lot of money. You're going to hire outside counsel. God knows why you have to hire outside counsel, but you always do. And what's the end result going to be? People are getting older. You think it's going to go away? It's never going to go away. Six get benefits. Thirteen don't. You explain to the world, the city, and to Cindy how that is fair. And we're brought up in America with the idea that fairness is the number one. Liberty, justice, pursuit of happiness, fairness. Everybody should have the same benefits in a given situation. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Anybody else? No? If... Okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor Protam, members of the council. My name is Sandra Smith. I'm at 701 White's Bar. Fairness. You know, I've read the Constitution from one end to the other, and I never found that word in there. It's not in the Declaration of Independence either. If I go and sign up for a job, there's a set pattern to what that job entails. I agree to those conditions and those circumstances. That's what I get, regardless of what happens or how dangerous it is. And I've done dangerous, too. I served this nation. Fairness wasn't in that either. So fairness is not a word that should be taken into this. This is what, what was the contract that they agreed to? And what was the city's responsibility in that contract? That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Deborah Finkston. My son is Andrew Ashcraft. I am asking for you guys to please step up. Steve, you knew Andrew when he was a little boy. He played with your son. You asked at the last time that you wanted to know the truth. I hope you read all of the paperwork. I hope you read the case. I hope you understand why in the Superior Court it was in our favor. I hope you read that. You graduated with Andrew Charlie. You should be standing up for him. You know he was full-time. I'm sorry, Chris. I don't, I don't know. I can't point at you. I can't say anything, so I'll just move on. Okay? Mr. Lamerson, you have stated to us time and time again that you support this family and that you are with us. So I ask you today that you vote for us as you have told us time and time again that you would. Mr. Lozelle, I don't know you either, but Andrew was a full-time Granite Mountain inter-agency hotshot. All of you know it. I ask that you vote fair, that you vote honestly, and that you look at this situation. Mr. Palladini has presented his case three times and has lost for the city three times. Yet you went into an executive session and asked for his legal counsel. I'm asking that you ignore it.
Anyone else? Not seeing any. I'll open it up to the council. Jim, you got your light on.
Thank you. I don't think I've ever publicly stated I would do this or that. What I have publicly stated is that I wanted to go through the process in that I voted at one time to challenge the, or appeal the decision of Ashcraft for a reason, and that reason was to hear more truth. I've heard the truth. What I've heard was Statute 38-842 with regards to defining what classifies somebody with regards to full-time, part-time, 40 hours and 64 hours, seven months, six months. I've heard staff testify under an oath that they did things that should have never have been done, that you can't go back and change it, all right? And we can't go back and change it. What we can do is go forward, and that's where I'm at, and I will cast my vote in good conscience.
Anybody else? Jean?
Thank you. I did read everything. I read all the transcripts, looked at all the exhibits, including Judge Mackey's decision, and it left two key questions unanswered for me. One is whether a local pension board has the authority to retroactively enroll an individual in the PSPRS. That question wasn't answered at all. The other is, what is meant in the statute by regularly assigned hazardous duty of a municipal firefighter? Not answered for me. I really think we need to appeal it.
Anything down here?
No.
I'll reserve my right to speak later.
Okay, great.
I'm good.
Charlie?
Well, it's no secret that, you know, while the challenges we have faced are nowhere near the challenges the families of the hotshots have faced, this has been a terrible experience. It continues to be a significant challenge every single day because we are talking about people's lives, livelihoods, how they remember, how others remember, and it's just not a great situation. I, too, want to find finality in this. I want to make sure that this issue doesn't ever arise for another firefighter or police officer's family into the future. I want to make sure that the unanswered become answered so we know, and it prevents this from ever happening again. Because unfortunately, it happened, and it is what's happened, and we need to bring finality. And you're not going to like my answer, but finality is getting answers to the questions that we don't have answered yet. I've read every document. I've looked at everything, and unfortunately, both Judge Mackey and the board left some doors wide open to interpretation into the future. And that's a concern. That's a concern because the unintended consequence long-term for this municipality or any municipality could be astronomical. Not saying that they are, but they could be. I know which way I'm leaning at this point, but that being said, my decision and what will ultimately be my vote is by no means an easy decision to make. It's something that ultimately I feel is where I'm at as a policymaker, while understanding, too, that I'm a human being trying to make the right decision.
Chris?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
My vote last time for Andrew was no, not to appeal. And I'll reiterate the reason why I don't think we should appeal these two cases and the second stage for Mrs. Ashcraft. Do we have fiscal responsibility to City of Prescott citizens with finances? Yes. But for reasons I can't get into, there were mistakes made, decisions that were made, that I don't feel comfortable with bringing to the public right now. But in the end, they weren't lumberjacks. They weren't gardeners. They were called hotshots. Okay, what does hotshot imply? They didn't say they were the world elite tree chopper downers, okay? They were firefighters, regardless of how they were classified. So given my responsibility, my financial responsibility as citizens, I still have to sleep at night knowing the right thing to do.
Go ahead. I'll go ahead, Chris, real quick. And I think if you look at this thing the way it's laid out today, there's a reason why we're voting three separate votes, at least in my opinion there is. And the reason is, and from my standpoint, whether you all here agree with me or you don't, or folks out here agree with me or they don't, every one of these people were hotshots, but all of them were treated differently. And basically, based upon what we received and information, as Greg put, and different levels of expertise and different levels of being in each session, there was promises made to certain people that weren't made to others. There was a determination made based upon us sending a comment and a lawsuit to Judge Mackey. He reviewed the lawsuit based upon the information he had at hand. And in my opinion, that information of Ashcraft in hand opposed to the other ones in hand are different, and they need to be viewed as different. And if they weren't to be viewed as different, we wouldn't be voting on them. Today is different. So my vote will reflect the information I received from Human Resources, the information I've received from city manager, the information I've received from our attorney, and all our dialogues. So I will, I will vote that way.
Thanks. You know, I wrote some things down because I think there were some things that have to, have to be said on this. We don't want to throw anyone to the curb. We never have. My feeling is if they qualify for it, we owe it to them. If they don't, we don't. You know, as a council, we just can't give away the public treasury because we feel for the families. I mean, we were shown the forms they had filled out and signed. The appeal was meant to seek clarity. My goal was and is to have an independent, unbiased, third-party look at this and decide. For part of this, I think they have done that. I was disappointed to hear that Judge Mackey said he knew he would not be the last word on this. I was kind of hoping he would be the last word on this, but a lot of questions have not been answered. We have no desire, I feel as a council, to put you families through more grief. Just questions that need to be answered for us to move forward responsibly. You know, where do we go from here? What happens now? I look at our brush crew. We have guys doing very similar duties out there, and until not too long ago, they could have been assigned to support wildfire. We are redefining wildland firefighter as we move forward in this whole thing. You know, there was testimony that, you know, if using a chainsaw to help mitigate the danger of wildfire makes you a firefighter, my fear is we have a whole crew working right now. Some are not on any retirement system at all. You know, I look at some of the people I've been kind of disappointed with. I share some of Jim's sentiments here. You know, our fire chief that we had at the time, Chief Willis, Human Resources, senior staff, did we not know we were set up wrong? Did we not understand we were set up wrong? Testimony that it's not my responsibility to make sure they had benefits that I was told from a fireman, that he said in testimony, I mean, they considered each other brothers. If I knew something was going wrong, I'd scream it to the top of my lungs, and not once did someone come to me and say we were doing it wrong. We have operated the same way for 12 years, and no one has ever said anything that we were doing it wrong. The Ironwood hotshots who are structured the same way as us, they have since disbanded. You know, one example that just screams to me, my big fear is that we don't make the same mistake again and again moving forward. You know, Chief Willis is not in public safety retirement system. He's in the Arizona retirement system. What happens if he gets hurt or killed driving to help with a fire somewhere in the state? What happens to his wife at that time? The guys working the brush crew under direction from the fire department, what if something happens to them? What if they cut their leg off and die out in the woods? What if a tree falls on them? You know, some of them don't have any retirement system set up at all. We need answers to these questions to know how to move Prescott forward, and I was hoping we would have got them through Judge Mackey's decision. Because employees want and need to know what benefits they have should tragedy strike. I had a policeman once on a ride-along tell me that after these events that take place, I'm not really sure the city will take care of my family if I get killed. You know, this is something that weighs on them. We should not have to decide or go to court. Benefits should be crystal clear and written down. We were told we had that. The court told us that we don't have that. I have no desire to put anybody through more grief, and I just think we need an impartial third party to decide this, and I think for part of that, we had it. So that's all I got. Jim?
Thank you. I go back to having the opportunity to sit through three days of testimony in a public quasi-judicial scenario with a fire board of appeals. I repeatedly heard testimony with regards to what 19 people working, whether on behalf of the City of Prescott, State of Arizona, or the federal government, were doing. They were hired under the umbrella of wildland firefighter. They averaged 64 hours a week in some cases. They were regularly assigned to some form of hazardous duty. In the timeframe in which these fellows were, in the year they died, they were assigned to at least three, if not five, major fires. They were hired as firefighters. They died as firefighters, and to call them anything less is offensive. Now, the fact of the matter still remains, there were some errors that were made. The errors may have had to do with who was monitoring them to make sure if indeed they were going to be classified part-time, they weren't working longer than 40 hours a week, or if indeed they were only going to be hired for six months or less. There were people that were in charge of some of these things. The council does not interfere with the managerial duties or the administrative duties by charter of city management. I'm not a happy camper. I haven't been a happy camper since the day of the fire. This is torturous to keep going through this over and over. And I think at some point, we have an obligation to be responsible to the citizens that are going to be taxed with this. We have a responsibility to the guys that were taxed with it when they died, and we have a responsibility to the families that were left behind. And that's where I'm at. I will vote my conscience. I would hope there was something, Mr. McGroder, I don't even know the man hardly, other than his ties. He said that there may be some opportunity to talk. I don't know in what scenario that means. I don't know how that would move forward. I don't know anything about that part of it. But I do know that I'm prepared to vote like everybody else is here today, and I'm prepared to vote my conscience. I got what I needed to hear from voting against the, or voting for the challenge to Julianne's deal last time. I heard what I needed to hear. I sat there for three days and listened over and over and over, testimony after testimony. Guys, at some point, you can't do business the same old way. It was done this way for a long time. People were employed to advise council. I never heard the advice, hey, guys, we're doing it the wrong way. Do you know that the city's exposed? And yet, here we are again contemplating voting for a budget that we haven't seen yet, and I'm just not a happy camper at this point.
Anybody got anything else? Okay, we have a potential three motions to vote on here. Is there a motion on item number one?
Mayor Protam, before we get there, I'm sorry. You know, since Councilman Lamerson brought it up and before we take this vote, you know, I'm prepared to vote today. However, Mr. McGroder did bring up something of interest, and my understanding is that we have until March 26th to take our vote. Maybe now's the opportunity to direct staff to have a conversation.
Unlegal, can you still take a vote and speak after that, or have you set a course?
Well, we don't really have any specific procedural rules that prohibit you from discussing. You know, in other words, once, you talk about if a motion is seconded made, you can discuss...
discuss that after the motion is second. Once you vote on it, on that particular issue, the matter is, should be closed, and then you move on to the next item.
I would guess that no matter which way it went, council could still speak with council no matter what's going on.
But I think what I'm hearing is a potential motion to continue. If, maybe I misheard.
No, that would be what I'm considering. I'm willing to listen and see if there's an option here that isn't currently in front of us. That's where I'm at.
And just for scheduling purposes, as you all know, next Tuesday is technically an off Tuesday, but that doesn't mean you can't have, you can't continue this for say a week till the 17th. If everybody's, if any, you know, if there's a, I would suggest that all six of you ought to be in attendance if that's going to be the case. You don't have to wait until the next regular scheduled, which is the 24th.
Well, we could find that out in just a second, there's a motion on the floor to continue?
Is there a motion or not?
I would move to continue these agenda items to next Tuesday at 2:00 P.M.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Okay, there's three options available, except the motion on option number one, excuse me, item number one.
Can we have that each one read by the clerk, please?
So the motion, the first one says, move to authorize or not authorize an appeal of the city of Prescott PS PRS local board decision regarding William Warnakey's eligibility and PS PRS to the Yavapai County Superior Court.
Mayor Protem, I move not to authorize an appeal to the city of Prescott PRSP local board decision regarding William Warnakey's eligibility in PS PRS to the Yavapai County Superior Court.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, let's vote.
Passes five, or one, two, three, four.
Two votes, you're a vote both.
Yeah. Four to two to not authorize an appeal to the, of the William Warnakey case, council, or Mayor Protem Kukneal and Councilwoman Wilcox dissenting.
Okay, item number two, or, yeah, item number two, please read.
To authorize or not authorize an appeal of the city of Prescott PS PRS local board decision regarding Sean Meisner's eligibility and PS PRS to the Yavapai County Superior Court. Is there a motion?
Is there a motion?
I'd like to move not to authorize an appeal to the city of Prescott PS PRS local board decision regarding Sean Meisner's eligibility and PS PRS to the Yavapai Superior Court.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, let's vote.
Passes four to two, Mayor Protem Kukneal and Councilwoman Wilcox dissenting.
Item number three, can you read that one?
Move to authorize or not authorize an appeal of the Yavapai County Superior Court decision regarding Andrew Ashcraft's eligibility and PS PRS to the Arizona Court of Appeals, seconded by councilman. Need a motion.
I would move not to authorize an appeal to Yavapai County Superior Court decision regarding Andrew Ashcraft's eligibility and PS PRS to the Arizona Court of Appeals.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, let's vote.
Passes five to one, Councilwoman Wilcox dissenting.
Okay, is there anything else that we have to speak about? We are adjourned.